All right, let's, I'd like to call the meeting to order. The Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for October 9th, 2017. Could I have the roll, please?
Tyler Robinson.
Here.
John Spring.
Here.
Brendan Walker.
Present.
Brendan Sporhays.
Here.
Andre Spinelli.
Here.
Danielle Bailey.
Here.
Mitzi Barker.
Here.
Greg Strike.
Here.
Brian Looney.
Here.
John Cecil. Oops, never mind. Thank you.
Congratulations, John. You can come over here now. Thanks, Lori. And I just wanted to mention with that, to Mr. Walker and Mr. Sporhays, I believe this is your last meeting for both of you, correct? So, thank you, on behalf of everybody else here, thank you for your participation, your service to the city, your great perspectives, I think, that you have brought. And I guess you get to tag someone else into your seat, so, anyway. You will be missed, the two Brandon bookends. Next up, disclosures. Mr. Walker.
None.
Danielle.
None.
Brian.
None in our meeting.
None.
I really mean it this time, yeah.
None.
Great. John.
None.
Mr. Spinelli.
None.
Mitzi.
None.
And Brendan.
None.
And I have none. Onto the regular agenda. Can I have a motion to postpone Case 2017-0109? Thank you, Mr. Strike, seconded by Mr. Sporhays. And we're postponing indefinitely, is that correct?
Yeah.
To postpone. Any objection? Hearing, none. That contact-sensitive solutions agenda item is postponed. Next up is Case 2017-132, Review and Recommendation of the General Government 2018 Proposed Capital Improvement Budget and 2018 to '23 Proposed Capital Improvement Program. Thank you for the work session earlier. Is there a staff presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not beyond the remarks that we've already made in the work session, but I would just bring to your attention the recommendations on Page 3 of the one staff memo that, in order to help you with your resolution. So, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. What's the wish of the body? Go ahead, John.
Yeah, just a kind of a clarification. When we recommend approval of the CIP, sometimes we put, I don't know what to call it exactly. Are they findings or are there issues that we address? Like occasionally we talk about, you know, cost of certain projects and whatever. Would those be like a list of conditions of approval or would they just be findings?
Mr. Chairman, through the chair, Mr. Spring, I think they're issues, as I recall from what's been done in the recent past.
Yeah, so it's kind of more, a little bit more informal then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then, if I can make a motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I move to recommend approval of the General Government 2018 Proposed Capital Improvement Budget and 2018-2023 Proposed Capital Improvement Program.
And that's seconded by Ms. Barker. Go ahead.
Yeah. In listening to the members of the commission, it seems like there's general support for the budget and that there's, it was very well thought out. I don't have any problems with any particular of these projects. I think they're all going to contribute to the general welfare of the community. There are a few issues, however, that I would like included in our recommendation for approval. Might need some help on some of them to come up with some good wording.
So, do you see these as amendments to your, or as findings associated?
Well, that's why I talked about that. I see them as listing as findings, more or less, I think. No real recommendation for amendments, I don't think.
Great.
We're just reviewing and recommending, I think.
Yep.
The input, that's important, not necessarily, you know, hammering them over the head with it or something. Number one finding or issue is encouragement to complete and/or prepare at least the first redevelopment focus area study within the next year in order to implement the land use plan recommendation for redevelopment focus area and the connection between the redevelopment focus area and the capital improvement program, so that we can implement at least one of these special areas in order to show something, you know, some more results from the capital improvement program than we currently see when we scatter all the projects throughout the city. Focusing on one, at least some of the projects on redevelopment focus area would greatly enhance and have some synergy, I think, among the projects for at least this one area. So you can summarize that however you want and put it in, you know, a little bit more concise terms, please. Second issue finding involves the comprehensive plans. And comprehensive plans, as the chair mentioned, contain a vast array and list of public improvement projects. Most of them, I think all of them, have implementation sections that list projects and programs that need to be implemented and who's going to implement it. Those should, at a minimum, be listed in a comprehensive manner so that the public works, whether the O&amp;B or the planning department, can incorporate that into the CIP process. We, I think we neglect that, and currently, there's a lot of projects out there that are probably pretty worthwhile that aren't really even being considered in the CIP. They should at least be listed and reviewed or, you know, analyzed or evaluated along with other projects. And then my particular finding issue involves the Midtown Corridor Improvement project that's listed in the CIP. It says Denali Street area project. We found out from discussions earlier in the work session that this appears to be a road project. All road projects should be included in the transportation plan, if only, if not only for purposes of financial constraint. And my opinion is that the transportation plan should drive the CIP, the CIP should not drive the transportation plan. So you kind of got the cart before the horse here. If you're really proposing a road project that's not in the transportation plan, then you should coordinate with AMATS and make sure that either the, it's, the transportation plan includes it or take it out of the CIP. Sorry for the verboacity there, but...
Mr. Strike.
And I would like to add one more comment, that the inclusion of the map is a welcome addition, and I want to single out Mr. Gary Jones and thank him for including that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strike. Ms. Barker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to do, thanks staff for their analysis. The table and the map were very helpful to give us a crosswalk as to where things do connect with the comprehensive plan. I'd like to maybe elaborate on some of the issues that Mr. Spring brought up. I think we've come further in the past year than we have in some of the previous years in seeing some linkages between the comp plan and the CIP, but I think we're still not there yet in terms of an overall buy-in to the vision of the comp plan by the various factions, interests, and departments within municipal government. I think we have a job to do there. It's hard to do when we're in a position of planning from scarcity as opposed to planning for vision. And I would just like to add that as an issue is that we really need to be planning for vision and starting to take some bites at implementation of the comprehensive plan and the composite area neighborhood development plans.
Thank you, Mitzi. Great comments. And I'd just also add, I appreciate Mr. Wilber bringing the initial list to us in August 7th, August of this year. It was helpful to see ahead of time, so appreciate that. With that, could everyone please vote on our recommendation? Thank you, Lance, and good luck at the assembly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next up is a public hearing item, and that is Case 2017-110. It's a review and recommendation of a draft ordinance essentially creating a new R3A residential mixed-use district. The procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meeting is after staff presentation. I will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limit established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including his or her representatives, in this case, the municipality, 10 minutes, we might let you go a little longer if needed. Representatives of groups, community councils, PTAs, 5 minutes; individuals, 3 minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes except commission recommendations to the Assembly, which are not appealable. This action before us is a recommendation to the Assembly. So with that, we have the staff report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, John Cecil. So, this body had a work session with staff last week, last Monday, so I'm not going to repeat that for you, but I did want to take the opportunity to just briefly walk through the attachments in your staff packet so that you're aware of those, and then we can get to questions at the end. So, Item G1 constitutes the staff report. There is attachments to that staff report. So Attachment 1 is the actual ordinance that we reviewed last week. And that goes through Page 2443. Attachment 2 is a schematic colored 11-by-17 drawing of the comparison of the proposed R3A building type with the others that exist already under Title 21. Attachment 3 is a map, 11-by-17 colored map, that identifies the proposed locations of the R3A zoning, potential zoning districts, and there's approximately 10 to 12 of those. Attachment 4 is some additional amendments that staff worked up, and I believe we went through those with you last week. There's three essentially with that. Attachment 5 are the public comments, so essentially AWU, Public Works, traffic, and current private development, and Health and Human Services provided public comments. And then the very last item that I wanted to bring to your attention tonight is the FCC, Federation of Community Councils Resolution 2017-1. And as we noted last week, the FCC did go on record asking for a 60-day postponement in order to give their membership more time to review the proposed ordinance, but I have a couple of quick comments on that. So, just to follow up, it's, staff believe that we have met the intent of the Title 21 notice requirements for this ordinance. We have also made an effort to meet with various stakeholder groups, including the Live, Work, Play Organization, the Federation of Community Councils, group of local architects, three community councils. And I just might add that after staff had the opportunity to show them Attachment 3, which is the map, that all of those groups, you know, while they didn't say they wanted to rescind the resolution asking for extra time, the concerns that they had about R3A sort of melted away. One of those in particular was the maker of the motion at the Federation, which was the Fairview Community Council. After we had an opportunity to meet with three or four of their members, they no longer appear to have the concerns they did coming into the meeting. So, that may play into your discussion and action on that particular item. And then we also had lunch and learn at the permit center with some folks that were interested in the R3A. So with that, I'll stop and ask if there's any questions for staff.
Go ahead, Mr. Spring.
Yeah, I guess I have a clarification. I'm not sure I'm interpreting everything correctly. This involves the height bonuses, and the ordinance, current ordinance allows a 70-foot maximum height if you meet certain criteria above the, what, the 45-foot, I think, by right, I believe. So you've got 70-foot, and it allows it in anywhere, in any of the locations that the R3A is listed in the ordinance, right? And it lists town centers, city centers, I guess, main streets, and transit corridors, right? Now, in looking at the B3, for instance, and trying to make kind of comparisons between the two, the B3 height limitations go up to 70 feet also, 75 feet, something like that. But that's limited to just the city centers and town centers. I don't believe that is allowed in main streets or transit corridors. Am I correct about that?
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct? So I don't understand, it seems to me that this is way out of scale for main streets and transit corridors. There must have been a reason why B3 wasn't allowed to be 75 feet or whatever on the main street and transit corridors. And my concept of a main street is kind of a low-scale, kind of a pedestrian, a human-scale type of environment, not a, you know, high-rise environment. I mean, 70 feet, that's not human-scale. I don't understand the rationale for that and why it's not consistent with the B3 height limitations.
I guess the B3 would allow up to 75 feet in a town center or a regional commercial center or in midtown. So B3 would allow 75 feet in three places. The R0 district allows a conditional height increase of up to 65 feet in certain locations near downtown and midtown or UMed. The R3A district is intended to allow basically the same maximum density as the R3 district. It is allowing for somewhat taller buildings for several reasons. One, it does try to allow for a mixed-use ground floor, so a commercial ground floor, so it looks to hopefully allowing for vertical mixed-use and to still get residences above that. The neighborhood protection standards are designed to ensure that the taller buildings are going to be set back from neighboring residential. So it really would be larger sites where you would see these taller buildings towards the middle of such sites. The neighborhood protection standards have height setbacks, shadow, sunlight shadow protections, and they also come with some provisions to keep the maximum tower dimensions, the floor plate, the slender towers, to keep the lot coverage down for the taller parts of the building. So it is allowing for taller buildings. It's designed to allow for taller slender towers on large sites set back from the neighboring residential areas, partly to allow for more efficiency on the site. With a mixed-use development comes the commercial on the ground floor, commercial parking. So we see the interest in allowing for the 42 dwelling, 43 dwelling units per acre maximum with taller buildings to, in part, make up for that, the presence of commercial on the lot coverage. Secondly, it does allow for taller buildings in the interest of encouraging housing development. There is interest in the development community to develop that kind of housing with low-to-medium rise buildings and with views and that taller apartment feel. So, there is interest in developing this soon, apparently, according to our information, and so those were the reasons for allowing this much height. We hope that the neighborhood protections will mitigate that. And our most recent amendments, set of amendments that are on Pages 3 and 4 of the main staff memo end with an amendment on Page 4 to strengthen the sunlight access provision. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Other questions? I got a couple before we go to public hearing. Referring to the ordinance, Page 2 of 20, another purpose statement right around, I guess, line 30 or 30, I guess, talks about gross densities between 12 and 30 dwelling units per acre. And then later in the ordinance, under increased housing density, you get 10 feet of additional height is allowed where the housing density of the development is at least 30 dwelling units per acre. So it appears there's a bit of a, kind of a conflict there. Maybe you could address that. And then as just a point, I was just curious, so I looked at two of our mixed-use buildings today. The one we just opened on Spinard is over 34 units an acre. Another one in Mountain View is over 30, not by much, but those are only three stories. And I would also just add that, you know, the trend in residential development in every other city is to build smaller efficiencies, micro units, sometimes they're called, I'm not saying we're going to get to the point of Seattle, but that would have the effect of actually increasing. Effectively, what you're doing is increasing the rental revenue per square foot, which is needed here, but you're also increasing the density if you're counting every one of those as a unit. So I wonder if you could address, is that a regulatory thing when we say the purpose is up to 30 and then we go ahead and allow it to be over 30, or is that kind of just guidance?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. That is not regulatory. It is a purpose statement, so it is not a standard, that gross density statement. The key word there is also gross. It refers to the overall neighborhood density, not the density on the site. So it's naturally lower than what you're going to find on-site. So 15 to 30 dwelling units per acre gross is a different type of measurement, and many of the residential zones have this type of purpose statement, and those are all gross, dwelling units per acre.
So, Tom, you don't anticipate, then, people hear, you know, we have a rezone in front of us, and it's a half-acre lot, and so we're not going to, you know, do the math and say it can only be 15 units there because it can't exceed the 30. I mean, I just want to make sure that we're not driving at, thinking of it as an upper limit, then.
Yes, we're pretty confident that if, when and if folks tend to do that, we will simply point them to the rules of interpretation in the code, which lay out that these purpose statements are not regulatory. They just provide a general planning purpose for the district. Among the other residential zones with this type of gross density per acre, R2M, R3, and several others in the urban area, those are a little different from what, you know, you're allowed per site on each of those zones. So technically, Title 21 is pretty tight about it. Sorry about that. And we're confident it won't be used that way by the department.
Thank you. My other question is on the district location requirements, where we say it has to be in an area designated in the comprehensive plan for compact mixed residential use medium and adjacent to or within one of the following land use designations. I think that language is meant to be adjacent to, or within one of the following land use designations or adjacent to the street classification. I don't want to get into a situation where, well, we're adjacent to the town center. Is that what it's really trying to say? And then what does adjacent mean? Is it across the street? Is it? I think what you want to say is adjacent to the street, but it's one of the designate, it's a designation, land use classification, yes?
Adjacent is the term there that the language is intending. Adjacent means basically a budding or across the street. It's a pretty tight interpretation in the code, so it is, it's really intended to be right near one of these features. Now, the main locational requirement up above first establishes where it's going to be within. It's going to be within an area designated with the dot-stipple pattern as residential mixed development, mixed-use development, over one of three types of land use designations, within one of these three following types of areas, within a town center, within a medium-density residential designation, then a main street corridor, and only where one of those three has that dot-stipple pattern. That's where it's within, but in addition to that comes this statement you were asking about. Must be adjacent to one of the following land use designations or street classifications. So it must be right next to one of these centers or a main street corridor, or the last two features being transit, good transit service. So, if it's not right next to a mixed-use center, town center, for example, really want it right along transit, public transit.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for staff before we go to public hearing? Okay, at this point, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify, please come on down. Make sure that you state your name, and if possible or if needed, spell it for the record, even you.
It is possible. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Tim Potter with Dowell. I also... I also serve as a co-chair for the AADC Live, Work, Play Housing Committee.
That's fine.
I'm not speaking for the committee tonight. We've had an awful lot of discussion about this, but we have not formulated a formal position, so I won't be representing them. So I have three minutes. I have probably more than three minutes worth of things to say because she's already started the clock. But quickly, in going through on page...
A little bit more.
Okay. If you go to page three out of 20 in the G1 package, where it talks about something that you just spoke about, Mr. Chair, minimum residential density. There is, apparently, after the purpose statement, when you get to district-specific standards, there is a standard that says the development shall be built to a net density of at least 15 dwelling units per acre. So I just want to confirm and clarify that this means that when someone submits a building permit in the R3A zoning district, and it's 14.97 dwelling units per acre net, that their permit is going to be denied. That's what I'm reading here. And it'll be interesting to see if that becomes a problem. Next item is under Neighborhood Protections under Northern Climate. That's B2 on page seven out of 20, where it says, "Buildings taller than 40 feet shall not cast shadows on residential properties, dedicated parks, or school properties." And then gives the time of year and time of day standards. And in this, it appears that when it says shall, that means even on the far corner outskirts of a 15-acre elementary school site where it's dense spruce trees or something, and the sun doesn't ever hit the ground anyway, and it's across a street, that if the shadow touches that, then you're done. You have to redesign your project or go to a different site. And, you know, when we say shall on an absolute, when we're thinking about larger pieces of property like that, I think we're limiting some of the potential project sites that we may want to actually have developed. So with that, I propose maybe building envelope or something like that would be more appropriate. In going to the next item, let's see, quickly. I'm probably going to get cut short on the one I really want to talk about. On the page 17 of 20, when you go to R3A, the second area in the matrix, get over to minimum setback requirements, where you have a minimum of 10 feet.
Just go ahead and quickly finish that one.
When you have a minimum of 10 feet, but then when you go to floors exceeding three stories, all of a sudden you're pushed back to 30 feet. And I don't know if that's based on some angle away from the street and the front yard on the basis of some type of angle, or if it was a construction dimension that makes any sense at all. I'm guessing it's just an additional 20 feet, and it may not rhyme or reason when associated with building design or structure. And lastly, on your colored building cross-sections, I just want to go on the record that, a couple of things. When you go outside of Alaska and you look at the trends in housing, and you see that the square footage of the unit size is going down, a complimentary effort to give a perception of volume and space and light and air is that the floor-to-ceiling height is increasing. I believe that in the dimensions included in this that are allowed in the R3A, you will never get a third floor of residential on top of any of the commercial space, and the projects will likely not be financially feasible and probably won't be done. In the projects that I've gone outside of Alaska and investigated and looked at, they are going to a 14-foot floor-to-floor for the first floor. That is typically used for retail, office, or amenity space, like community living room space with big tall fireplaces, those types of things. And then the floor-to-floor on the residential floors are between 11 and 1/2 and 12 feet, so that you can actually have a 10-foot floor-to-ceiling height inside. And when you start adding these numbers up, you know, not only can you not do it in 40 feet, but you can't do it in 45 feet either. So enough discussion about the 60 and the 70 feet and all that, but on the very front edge of this kind of experiment that we're doing, I think that you're doomed to failure, both from a financial feasibility, and we're not going to be creating the type of spaces that the market wants to have that will be associated with keeping the residents here rather than saying, "I'd rather be in Seattle," or Edmonds, or Portland, where they have these really cooler spaces. So I think we're building in failure, and I believe that your initial vertical element should allow for this amenity and commercial space and up to three floors of residential above that, and the height ought to be 50 feet as a permitted outright. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. Just to clarify your last point, your recommendation is to go to 50 feet. Is there a number of stories within that 50 feet? Are you saying, you saying three stories within 50 is what the byright, or if you could get four stories within 50, you'd be good to go with that, too?
Well, I think that it's going to end up, well, you could do three or four stories. And I believe that what's going to happen is that you're going to have the amenity and commercial space on the ground floor. And I believe to make this, to get the density that we want to have supposedly, and create the unit spaces that actually work from a financial feasibility standpoint, because the retail space is not the big deal here. That's a nice amenity, and that's an amenity thing for the neighborhood and the uses in the building. Because with higher density and smaller units, you need amenities in the building. You need to have a perception of space in your own unit, and you have to have close proximity to other amenities, which can be parks, or restaurants, or libraries, or whatever. And I think we're going to miss the ability to put the density with inside the building amenities and perceived air and space. So I'm looking at one story of that amenity or retail and up to three stories of residential on top of that and a permitted maximum height of 50.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. Any other questions for Mr. Potter? And I do intend to relay those questions that you asked of staff to get their take on them. I got four, your four points were made pretty clearly, so we can do that. Mr. Walker, go ahead.
So in your capacity as a planner and also on the AADC committee that you're on, have these been relayed to the staff already, or has this been part of the dialogue yet?
It's been not necessarily the dialogue with the staff, because Live, Work, Play was working through a variety of pro forma type evaluations themselves. And I think it would be very interesting for other members of the commission to ask your chairman as to what they have learned going through his job in trying to put together pro forma on a specific project, and it's very tiring.
Is there anything else you think we should consider?
No, I, you know, I always have a bent towards getting frustrated, and as I get older, it's harder to bite my tongue, so I apologize in advance. But as with Title 21, I don't believe there was adequate testing done. And similar to this situation, I believe that we have a shortage of testing that's been done to give any specific credence to some of the limitations that have been established in this. I think R3A is a great idea. It needs to be able to be formed in a way that it's actually workable and financially feasible in the marketplace. It needs to result in what we want to have. And one of the big survey items that we got at Live, Work, Play on the Housing Committee was multiple surveys that we did for numerous companies here in Anchorage. And it was a very significant size, like 800 responses. And one of the biggest things is that the housing is one of the biggest reasons given to employers for why people don't come or don't stay. So we need to make sure that the residences and the spaces that we're creating are as good or better than what our competition outside of Alaska is producing. Because when we try and get our millennials to come back to Alaska, even our own kids, we may have failed.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see further questions. I think, if you don't mind, it's not a full house here. I'm just going to run through real quick the points while they're fresh in my mind that Mr. Potter brought up. So for staff, first one is the minimum net density of 15. Is that a hard and fast number as proposed? Should be a yea or nay?
Mr. Chair, the Title 21, again, looking back to the rules of interpretation, generally when there's a fraction, if the, we use rounding, just mathematical rounding. So what we typically do, if we have a number of items, we may round up from 14.5 to 15.
But if it's not met, it's not going to, I mean, that's not a suggestive thing. That's intended to be a criteria.
Yeah, it's very important. It is a residential zone.
Okay, so next question, the taller than 40 feet, and 40 maybe, I'm having trouble getting 43 stories within 40 feet, but just if you get 40 feet and you shadow, and your shadow barely crosses the corner of a large property, that would not be allowable. So that was Mr. Potter's question or testimony, and I guess insinuation that there be more flexibility there. But right now, it's kind of a hard and fast. Touches any bit of the property and it's a no. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct, and that's purposeful.
Okay. And the 30-foot front setback when over three stories tall, is there a specific rationale for that? I can imagine it being very different depending whether it's a building on the north side or south side of a street, if you're trying to create a sunny spot, you know, behind it. But is there just some logic behind that one?
Yes, many cities use this, both in the north and south, and it's basically keeping to the scale of the neighborhood along the street.
Okay. There's no contemplation that it be somewhat flexible based on what actually is happening on that street?
As we experience it out there on the ground, 30 feet isn't very far from the Seems like a lot when we look at the number, but when we're out there, 30 feet isn't that far.
Okay. And then finally, the floor-to-ceiling ratios. What's, your heights and your drawing are based on what floor-to-ceiling heights?
The drawing that we handed out was just a very general, and it was based on, you know, typical construction ceiling heights. We have a second drawing that provides more detail that gives you both 10-foot, 12-foot for residential. And we also have other provisions in Title 21 that allow for taller first floors, more flexibility than maybe, than we've been able to communicate.
And just because, I asked one of our designers and said, "What's our, what would be our standard?" And we had more like, you know, 13 and 1/2, 14 and 1/2 for commercial on the ground floor, and 11 and 1/2 to 12 in the upper floors. So a little bit higher than what you have kind of calibrated for those residential floors. A lot of that just depends on what it is, both what you want from the massing of the unit, but also what do you have? I mean, we have heat pumps in our unit, so that brings the ceiling down. So if you're not, you don't have enough of a floor plate, you're kind of, you're challenged pretty quickly within a 10-foot. So just food for thought.
Yeah, we would appreciate the opportunity to pass out our more detailed drawing when the time comes.
Thank you for that. I think we have staff's responses to the testimony we heard. I'll let the commission sort of take that in contemplation. Thanks for your patience. Chris?
My name is Chris Cole. I'm an architect. I've looked at a project on the corner of Diamond and Arlene, where we, we looked at it a couple of different ways.
Chris, just pull the mic over towards you as you get into it. We'll pause you while you work out technical difficulties as well. And just so the folks know, I think you came with Tom Dryer, is that right? And Tom came up during our work session last week and said, I think, to our point about having, you know, visuals there, and he said, "Would it be okay if we brought some visuals?" So I appreciate you all bringing that along if it works.
If it works. She was working earlier.
We'll let you keep working. Just out of curiosity, is there anyone else that's going to testify? If we, you're going to testify separately? We'll be patient with this, because I do think it's important. Is there any magic you can use? Hold on, just leave it there a sec. Yeah, why don't, we can take a quick break while we try to figure this out. Take a five minutes. What we're going to do is, Chris is gonna, I'm sorry, did you know there's an innovation lab in the library right next door? It's just there. So we're going to ask Chris for some testimony of talking through it, since we can't get on the screen, but he does have kind of a visual 3D on the laptop. I'd recommend that we kind of huddle around a laptop or make it available here and there, and then make it available for members of the public if they'd like to see it. So if it takes one, two, or three times to run through, at least we honor the trouble that they've gone through. So, and we won't count that as time against you. Is that fair? Is that unfair to people? We're not a huge group here this evening, so let's try that. So Chris, go ahead with your testimony, then.
So this project you guys are all looking at is one of the sites that they've kind of designated as an optional change of zoning to the R3A.
Yeah, mic, a little closer to the mic, Chris, just so it picks you up.
So basically, you know, we've had this site for a few years now, since 2013 or 14, and we've been looking at options for it. We designed a, the history of it is, we designed a townhouse project on it, where we put, we had anywhere between 80 and 106 townhouses under the old code that we can put on it. What that does is, that basically puts, you know, all buildings, a lot of road, and then cedar fences everywhere is really what ends up happening. If you drive up and down Diamond, you know, that's basically what you get. This project is on the corner of Diamond and Arlene. Arlene is where, you know, you go into Diamond High School. It's just west of Campbell Creek. There's a park that a lot of people don't know about called Emerald Hills Park, just to the east of the property. So, you know, we started looking at what are our options for trying to do an appropriate development for this site. And at the time, a couple of years ago, we were looking at the possibility of an R4A, a change to R4A. It's not so easy in the code because that's only allowed in the mid-town districts, and there's some other restrictions on it. But anyways, so we started looking at the goals we wanted on this project under the R4A, which were actually, most of those apply to the R3A for this site. And the main goals were pedestrian access, we studied the... We studied the existing trails and how people walk through the site. We wanted, by having extra pedestrian access, we wanted buildings with small floor plates. We wanted to retain as much of the natural vegetation and the buffer, and buffer the lower residential zonings. That was, the natural vegetation was a big thing with the Sand Lake Community Council also. We gave five presentations to them, talking to them about, you know, what they felt about the project and how they, and made adjustments here and there on it. We wanted to create a transition buffer between Diamond and the neighborhoods also. So basically, it comes down to, to achieve this, to achieve all these pedestrian amenities, then you have to start doing underground parking and small floor plates for these buildings. When you do the underground parking, it's a pretty big expense. It's not cheap to do a bunch of underground parking. So then you need to really start looking at higher densities and higher densities and commercial to make that work. So...
So we'll just, you know, if you can get kind of get there and then. I'm sure there'll be questions, so try to summarize.
Okay. So basically, higher densities mean taller buildings. So we looked at six, seven-story buildings. We were using the whole 70-foot maintained, and then one of the biggest things was still maintain that sunlight to the neighbors so we wouldn't put a shadow on them. So basically, what I'm saying is, this is kind of just a mass model on the site, but the developer does need some flexibility to come up with a design that's feasible. There is no pro forma on this project yet because there's no zoning for it yet that it fits. So basically, what it comes down to is flexibility, I think. You have to have the maximum, you have to have a higher maximum height to achieve all the pedestrian access and everything else that you are trying to do in the zoning. So, I don't know, if you want to see the movie or...
Maybe some questions first, and then we'll go to it. But just out of curiosity, what are the heights then that you've contemplated in this site plan?
So basically, the three buildings that are facing the park would be 70-foot, and those are 10-foot floor-to-floor. And what we were thinking was, those would either be concrete or CLT. If you don't know what CLT is, timber, cross laminated timber. So that would be a pretty small floor plate, a pretty small floor thickness. And then you'd have exposed ductwork, and you'd have some areas where you'd bring the height down to eight-foot, like bathrooms and whatever.
And do you have, are you contemplating commercial uses here, or is this all residential?
It's, and then there would be 20,000 square feet of commercial in this project.
Can you just, before we go to the visual, the additional visuals, is there, I mean, part of our challenge is when you have a zoning district, you always, everyone always wants to do worst-case scenario. And the worst-case scenario doesn't always involve a big site. It sometimes involves a little site that's adjacent, you know, more adjacent to other things. So, I mean, do you have any thoughts of, you know, kind of trying to create a tool that might work both for your or this particular site's kind of master planning exercise versus a much smaller lot?
I think the sunlight protections are built in the height restriction, actually. So I think that is like an automatic, as soon as you put on, like this one, we have the building setback 125 feet. Not a lot of sites can do that. So that allows for, you know, the buffer of the sunlight, and that sunlight goes all the way to the property line on a 70-foot tall building.
And is that, in fact, where it says Chester H. Lloyd on your site plan, is that a park, is that a park right there?
That's the Emerald Hills Park.
And do you get with the thing that we heard earlier from Mr. Potter about the shadow on a park, do you avoid that?
That's on the east side of the building, so it doesn't even get to that side hardly. You know, it's not a, so the shadow happens that matters between September 21st and March 21st, or March 21st to September 21st. And I do have a shadow study that we could look at, too.
So it's basically, it would have to be by 3:00 PM, given its orientation. You're not touching like a corner of that park?
So it might get some of that park, and it might even get onto the properties, on the edge of the properties of some of the surrounding residential properties. So I think that wording that Tim was talking about as far as the building structure, the shadow to not hit the building structure of the adjacent, I think is pretty important.
Yeah, I'd imagine you'd be pulling those buildings away from that park if that was a hard and fast 3:00 PM on March or September.
Yeah, it actually goes in the corner of that park on that, the north west side of that park, yeah.
Any other questions, or people want to see the flyby of the modeling?
Yeah, I was following up here with the chair on the questions on the shadow, and I'm thinking, you know, between, it is between March and September, so you are looking at a pretty high sun. So I'm thinking, why, and you think you're hitting the shadow on the northern part of the park?
Yeah.
I think at 3:00 PM, the sun has come from the other direction.
The sun will be coming from the...
Almost from the north.
No, it's on the two days, right, Tom? It's not the whole, it's just on two specific days is the measurement?
Yeah, and it's really one day, they're identical. It's just the equinox.
Okay. Yeah, and I have the shadow study here on September 21st, and the northernmost building does cross onto that.
Just in case the mic didn't pick you up, but your testimony is that it does actually hit the park in some way, which would be a deal breaker in the current language.
Which raises back to the question to the staff, the terminology used "shall," and is that word a definitive word, or can that word be changed that could create a flexibility in the case-by-case basis for such approvals?
Yeah, and again, I want to, I just want to, clearly what we're doing here is, we're not dealing with a rezone for a particular case. I think we're using an actual concrete example to try to apply it, right? I mean, that's what we're doing here. So do you really want to ask that for staff's reflection?
I think it's an open question to the staff, is there an alternative word that would give the flexibility that might be necessary down the road if this is approved that allows some flexibility within the city and the commission to operate in? "Shall," as we've noted, is definitive. Is that the intent, is to be so definitive that we have, we're locked out one way or another, or can we come back with some relaxing language that gives some flexibility?
Yes, it is intended to be definitive, and the purpose is to protect these types of places. And so the, it's important to have a clear standard so everyone knows the rules. The means to get to more flexibility involved, you know, basically a discretionary review. The word "should" doesn't really work, it's just intent. "Shall" is the go-to word for regulation. If there is concerns about whether a park is worth being protected from shadowing from tall buildings, this happens to be a green belt park. We don't think it's a neighborhood park, maybe it's...
Your language is dedicated park. Is it a dedicated park in this example? Again, we're not looking at a specific...
Yeah, no, but I...
I think you should assume it's a dedicated park.
Yeah, I think the staff's response is pretty clear. I mean, they're saying that's what the intent is. Yeah, yeah. Okay, I got a couple of people in the queue. John.
Yeah, I appreciate having an example. It helps clarify it, I think.
Good job, Laurie.
Thanks for bringing the example to us.
This is the shadow study, right here, on September 21st. So it, you know, it does show...
Is that farthest extent 3:00 PM? Is that, those are the 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, or do you have more shown?
I believe, but I'm not positive. It's been a while since I've done it.
So you'd hit it on the residential property across the street, and you clearly kind of get it on the north and on the east as it swings?
Yeah, the goal was to not hit it on any of the structures, but...
So we're going to, maybe some other questions. Tom, did you have a question on that? Because I got some people in the queue, or did you want to, are you back on that issue? Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And another option is for certain kinds of parks, like green belts or, you know, non-neighborhood parks, you can always make it more discretionary through, you know, point to a discretionary review process, resolve minor, you know, minor shadowing on a park there. Or another option is just to focus the protection on certain kinds of parks, like neighborhood parks, where you do have a lot of activity per square foot or whatever. Thank you.
If we were looking at alternatives, that's your suggestion. And the discretionary review would be, it would be in front of whatever, so if it's a, would it automatically carry to a board, or would it be a staff review? What would it be?
It could be a staff administrative site plan review, could be a board, some major site plan review.
Okay. It's not often we get to just have visual stimulus while we're having these conversations, so thank you for that. Okay, Mr. Spinelli, were you good?
No, I didn't get to say anything.
Go ahead. Jeez.
Yeah, I was going to say, thank you for the illustration. Appreciate it. And I found it interesting that the shadow showed that the housing, the single-family housing across Arlene actually cast a shadow in the yard next to it. And so if we're really going to be consistent, we probably should eliminate the single-family houses and the shadowing effect, and, but, so it doesn't make sense to me. I agree with Mr. Potter's recommendation that perhaps we should consider making it apply only to the building envelope instead of the actual property line itself. That makes sense to me. Also, I like, I think it's, I like the fact that, I like density next to parks. I think the parks provide an amenity and open space needed for higher density, and I think we should encourage that. Perhaps we should make that part of the criteria or something, instead of making it like a detriment, making it harder to put it there because of the shadowing effect. If we go for the shadowing effect in a building envelope, then that begs the question, how do we apply it to a green belt where there's no building envelope?
Exactly.
So that's my problem, how you deal with that. And I like the idea, though, that maybe making exceptions to green belts or non-neighborhood parks or something like that. But that's all. Thank you.
Good comments, John. Make sure you hold them for later. Mr. Spinelli. Yeah, through the chair. I guess the shadow thing kind of answered one of my questions, but my other one, you might have mentioned it, was how many dwelling units per acre would this site be?
I think we're looking at, this is 260 units on 6.2 acres. I think that comes out to 42 or 43.
Mr. Walker.
So while we were talking with the staff about this shadowing issue, I thought I'd bring up a quick question, and then also I have a question for Chris as well. But, so native trees, which I think there, as I recall from the site, there's some native trees along that north edge of that site that are already casting shadows onto the yards and the structures to the north of this property. So is there anything in this new language or in the new code that would allow, or that would require the developer to remove native trees that might already be shadowing those properties? I mean, I'm just thinking about other things that might already be shadowing those, and if, you know, if they're removed and the new buildings are shadowing less, I mean, that's, seems like a good thing to me.
Yes, thanks for that question. The, there is no provision for regarding trees. The, one of the things about shadowing from a tall building is that it's hard to look at it at one point a year and say, that's, you know, that's the effect. When you have a tall building of 70 feet, its shadow will continue to cast into the winter, into October, into November, December, January, February. During those months, the shadow, the taller the building is, much taller than the trees, taller the building is, it's going to shadow pretty darn far into the neighborhood. Unlike a tree, it's a giant, you know, it's 100 to 120-foot wide, 70-foot tall, solid thing. It's a, it also, besides the shadowing, has a bulk. Visual presence is very different from trees, different from your neighbor's house. It's a different kind of thing that's being introduced into these areas. So these protections are designed to protect from that. We chose lot line because it is simpler, it's easy. Building envelope is defined in the code, but it varies by district, it varies depending on the site, easements, et cetera. So it's much harder to figure out. And lot line ensures that we are, you know, those tall buildings are doing nothing to take away from the enjoyment, use of the property. You know, a good example of a 70, 75-foot building, about 100 feet, 100-odd feet north or south of residences is the Warrens Off Tower on Spinard and Fireweed. That's a good visual of what that kind of bulk looks and feels like. And so it's hard for us to look at this and, you know, say, you know, a tall building isn't going to shade any different from a tree. It actually will as the winter deepens. We're just focusing on the swing season because it is a very important time to protect sunlight access to gardens, to south-facing outdoor areas on the parks, the residences, and the schools. These south-facing areas, when they do get sun, when they aren't shaded by a building, in the fall, that's primetime. That's the most important time to look out for the shadowing. Because during that period, that's when the sunlight can really make a difference. Get deeper and deeper in the winter, we know it's harder to stop shadowing from any kind of building, but from a tall building, it is different from what happens when you have smaller buildings.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Brandon.
I still had a question for Chris, if that's okay. So, I mean, we've talked about how the shadowing affects this case study. Did you find anything else that, any other impacts with R-3A? And then I guess my other question was, did you try this on for size with other zoning classifications?
This project basically still works with the R-4A zoning, but, and I think, I think it works with one other, I think it works with like RO or something like that that allows you to go higher buildings also.
What's it currently zoned?
One of those that allows the density. It's been a long time since I've looked at it, but we've kind of already gone over with some of the staff, a lot of the implications of some things like minimum setbacks on the primary road versus on, you know, two secondary frontage and stuff like that. So this version has the minimum setback for the project as Diamond, and then Arlene doesn't have the minimum setback, which would restrict, you know, pushing, it would push the parking into the site more instead of, you know, instead of on the edge, which, good or bad, it's where the retail is going to be. One of the things we do need to, I guess, look at some more is, we would probably want to reduce, do also a parking agreement through, or not a parking agreement, but a parking reduction to try to reduce some of the parking on the site. Then we could retain more of that natural vegetation you were talking about. So that would be kind of future. But I think it would still fit with their qualification requirements for parking reduction, so, you know.
Thank you.
Mr. Strike.
Thank you, through the chair. Trying to stay away from the specifics of your development here, but using the attributes as it may apply to this new, with the case before us. And so one of the, I'm back to H2, and that is the Northern Climate Protection, again, dealing with the shadowing because it also was prevalent with... dealing with the shadowing, because it also was prevalent with earlier testimony. A question to the staff and to the other chair, the other members. Would language at the end of this sentence, and I read, "Solar time on the March, September 21st equinoxes," comma, "without an approved variance by," and then we insert whatever group, whether it's a review, whether it's P and Z, and so forth, would that language cause concern or problems with how this ordn-- how this, um, case before us is adopted?
Uh, yes, thank you for that question. Uh, we'll have to, uh, look at the variants and, uh, answer that in a few minutes. Uh, another option would be to focus the protection on neighborhood parks, uh, as opposed to, you know, green belts and regional parks and forest parks. Uh, this is a green belt park, and I think neighborhood park would get at more of the area of highest concern.
And one of the reasons I wanted to be able to have that option and not just dedicate the, what we're trying to do here is solve one particular piece for parks, but whether we're dealing with school properties or residential properties, perhaps we're dealing with properties that are large acreage, that have different topography, that because of their topography, it's creating a shadow from the other adjacent property. There's any number of different reasons why the shadowing could affect a piece of property, but to throw the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak, and have a black and white ordinance here without the ability to have a variance that can go through an approved process, I'm just creating, trying to create a tool here that can be used, if applied, by a potential developer as they come forward.
Uh, we can take a look, think about it for a few minutes here, look at the, the variances available. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strike. Yeah, it would strike me that all these sites are gonna be different. Um, the reality is, I can't really think of any, I'm not, of any vertical mixed-use buildings that haven't been ours, which have all been highly subsidized. And that, the issue is that they, they're incredibly hard to make, to make work. And I think there needs to be, I, I appreciate you hearing that this has not had a pro forma thrown at it. I, I would love to say, go do that exercise and come back and let me hear, let me hear if the building grew to 90 feet or what happened, right? Um, but I, it's obviously at some point important part of the, I think, the earlier testimony was if this stuff doesn't pencil, then it's just, it's a zoning analysis, it's not a feasibility analysis, right? It's a first step of an important process. So, anyway, any other questions for, um, Chris on, on this site plan? Good? Thank you very much for bringing, oh, yep, thanks for bringing the, uh, the visuals.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Tom Drayer, and I'm representing actually more than one client today. And I'm gonna keep it pretty short. I, I just wanted to let you folks know that we are looking at actually three different locations where this R3A is, uh, being authorized as per the 2040 plan. And each one is in the 15 to $60 million range, full build-out, with a total of about $150 million between the three sites. So I, I just wanna let you know that there is, there's people looking at this, and it is a very important issue. It's an important type of zoning that, that fits a lot of the new style of, uh, projects that people are looking at. And I, and I also appreciate all the questions, the, the shadowing business and whatnot, because we will be hit with that later when I see you guys here for the actual rezon. And with that, I just appreciate your work. Thank you.
Hold on just a sec. So, I had a question, Tom. So, are your clients in these, uh, areas shown on the map?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So if, if they were not, what's your understanding of the process?
If they were not within the 2040 plan?
Yeah.
Well, then we'd have to go through the process of changing the 2040 plan at the same time that we're looking for a new zoning.
So you'd...
Probably like an R4A with special limitations or something like that.
Right, right, right. So you'd go through and process the, be a pretty high bar, in other words?
Yes, correct.
When you look at this map, I mean, any, any thoughts? I mean, is this, are there likely other locations that are appropriate for this type of zoning than?
I haven't analyzed that, no. Yeah.
Great.
Okay.
Uh, was there a question, or did that go away? No. Thanks for your testimony.
You're welcome.
Anyone else wishing to testify? Anyone at all? What's the wish of the body? And I, I am not going to close the public hearing yet. I'd like to hear from folks, given that one of the, um, comments we heard was additional time, so I'd like to hear your thoughts on that as well. Ms. Bailey?
I had another question for staff regarding H2 as well.
Go ahead.
I was, I'm not quite sure if I think the square shading on the property line should be it, but I'm also not sure if I would wanna go so far as to going all the way to a building, because then you're taking away the enjoyment of someone's yard. Um, I was wondering if maybe language added, um, buildings taller than 40 feet shall not, um, without the support of the property owner, cast shadows. I'm, I'm not even sure if that's something that gets too technical, because then you would run into the problem of someone who would never support anything being built in their neighborhood. But, I'm, it was just a question I wanted for staff, for them to consider, that I, I would kind of want something in between a bright-line rule of no shadow at all and the building. Um, and also, I'm worried about a variance, because then what are the standards for the variance? I feel like you have to create something so that that way we're not just letting someone come in indiscriminately. Um, and so I would, I would just be worried about variance procedures. So I don't have a necessarily recommendation, but those are just concerns I have.
Mr. Spring?
Well, I'm concerned we didn't see anybody from the community councils here tonight. I mean, something like this should brought out at least a few, we would think. I mean, I mean, density's a big issue, and height's a big issue. We've heard that a number of times on, uh, numerous rezoning requests. Um, I suspect that we need more time to allow the community councils to have some input. Um, I'm not sure it would change my mind necessarily, but I'd like to hear from them anyway. And, uh, I'm also concerned about what I perceive to be kind of corruption of the Main Street concept here. I mean, when we reviewed the land use maps here for Main Streets, and there happens to be one on the corner of Arlene and Diamond, I had no idea that we are going to allow 70-foot structures along there. So, I probably would have looked at it differently if I had known that, and I probably wouldn't have, uh, made a recommendation to approve all the, um, Main Street designations. But, I, I, I'm, I'm gonna probably propose a motion to postpone it. I don't know, 90 days seems a little bit long. Um, I mean, that's way more time than the community councils need to review it. Um, they need at least 30 days, I think. Uh, when was it, if I could ask staff a question, when, when was it released, and how much time have they had so far?
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, the initial packet was released in July, with this, initiated in July. Councils got their packet for this public hearing, what, five weeks ago?
Yeah, well, that's probably not enough time for most of them, I don't think.
Especially since most of them were on a summer break.
Excuse me?
Especially since most of the community councils were on a summer break.
Yeah, that's true. Uh, I guess I'd like to hear what other people think.
Can I, before I go to others, can I ask a question? So when I'm looking at the map, the potential R3A locations again, and there's a bunch of red circles, and then there's other colors not circled. Can you explain what, what actually are the potential R3A areas? Is it the circles and the other areas?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, it's only the areas that are circled. The, the rest of the features on the map are, are just, uh, uh, what?
Like in the core midtown, you could, you could rezon to this, right?
Only in the areas with the red circles. And, uh, this reflects the locational criteria and the land use plan designations.
So in the core midtown, well, the, the idea, though, in the core midtown, you could, you could build mixed-use anyway. You don't need R3A, and you could go up at least that high, right?
That's correct.
Okay. That's not on the table. So, so, and the reason I say that is I had con-- I'm not, and I don't mean to represent this as testimony from either of these community councils, but I think it was helpful. I, I kept hearing that, um, the community councils were all kind of fired up because of this zoning district. And I'd say, well, why? Well, suddenly we're gonna have these huge heights. And I saw, I'm talking to someone in Spinnard, I said, well, where do you think this is proposed to be? Well, we're not sure, we just don't want it to be plunked down. Well, look at the area, there's one area in Spinnard, that area's between Spinnard and Minnesota, and the people in Spinnard generally talk about that area as the dog patch area, I think, thanks to Thede Tobish. I mean, they, they, it's, it's like a total kind of throwaway. I mean, I'm not saying it's a throwaway, but it's currently zoned B3 in the first place, right? There are some little houses in there. Fairview, the same thing, okay? Fairview was all in it. What's the deal? Well, look at the area where we're talking about in Fairview. We're talking about the area between Gamble and Ingrah, where the Fairview Community Council is asking for anything, in fact, passed a tax abatement criteria or a tax abatement ordinance to try to encourage development in that corridor. And that's the only place that it's proposed. It's like the least likely, you'd have to be crazy as a developer, knowing what you know about the highway-to-highway plan, to even go and propose something in there, right? The only one buying land in that area is the DOT. So I, I do think, I get it, 70 feet seems pretty high for me, but I wanna, I think we're looking at some pretty minor locations. If anything, I would say, why is, why are those the only locations we're looking at? But staff, I think, would argue, that's why you have amendments to the comp plan. Because you could evaluate it once you knew kind of more about this tool. So I just, I have no problem not acting tonight. I know it's a priority, and staff would like to get it through, but I also think rushing things through has the effect of delaying it later. We're, we don't serve ourselves any good if you end up stuck at the assembly, remanded back to our body, and you're sitting here, and it's March, and you will have lost an entire design period for this thing. So that's, those are my thoughts. If we would postpone, I'd, I'd suggest we postpone to the first meeting in November, and I would give staff a list of things that we wanted them to work on and contemplate in the process. Otherwise, I'm prepared to vote on this tonight. But I haven't closed the public hearing yet. Mr. Spring, thanks. You're courageous.
Not really, just, uh, not very smart. Um, I'm gonna make a motion to continue the public hearing to the first week in November, the first meeting in November, to allow community councils an opportunity to submit comments, um, or testify at the meeting.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Bailey. Any discussion? And Mr. Strike is in the queue as well.
Through the chair, I, I don't think that's enough time. You're giving them, this is the second week in October. We're asking for our next meeting, two weeks, so it's two and a half weeks.
Well, not, you don't have to renotice if it's postponed. I mean, it's, we've, this, this meeting has been noticed since, since when? I mean, it's at least 21 days prior to this date.
Approximately a month.
And so, I mean, you're looking at the whole. I mean, but that said, I mean, you can, we can vote that down and try again if it, if it fails. I mean...
Could I respond to that too?
Go ahead.
Or not my motion. Um, it seems like most of the community council meetings are already over for this month, right? Well, at least half of them, anyway. First meeting in November is when? Is, uh, November what? That means that they really can't really get a, a meeting together to discuss it, probably. I think you're right, Greg. Um, so it would have to be either second meeting or the first meeting, and, uh...
Again, I, I have a great deal of respect for the community council process, but, but why, why do you feel that community councils ought to be waiting for a postponement to take action?
Now, that's a good question.
I mean...
They should be, uh, having a meeting on it, at least in order to discuss it at the, or comment at the assembly. Yeah, that's true.
So the, so the motion is to postpone until which date? The, was it the?
First, uh, meeting in November.
The 11, 11/6. That's the motion on the table. But before I ask for a vote, are there, are there items, aside from hearing from other members, are there items that you would like more information from to help your deliberation? Mr. Spinelli?
Um, I support the motion. I think it's enough time. I think the community councils have known about it. They should have been meeting with it, talking about it. We probably would have heard from them regardless tonight, if there was major objections. And I would like to hear some alternatives on the shadowing, if staff can come up with any sort of leeway there that's not a nightmare to enforce.
Thank you, um, Mr. Spinelli. Um, can I ask, you, you all mentioned that you've been to three community councils. Which ones were they?
Mr. Chair, we met with South Edition, Turnigan, and Fairview.
So can I ask why you met with Turnigan?
I think you know the answer.
I know, but they don't have a single site indicated in Turnigan.
As I, as John said earlier, once these councils learned of the mapping and the location criteria, their concerns fell away. I wanted to just reiterate, the concerns we heard from the council, from the FCC presentation, as well as our meetings with the councils, is the shadow factor, shadow issue.
Shadow knows. Um, the FCC, aside from saying that it wasn't enough time, did they give any other, they just talked about shadows? Is that, was that the main, the main issue?
Well, our, our presentation got abbreviated. They started to talk about concerns, and then they just jumped in and made the motion to postpone.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Hey, John, are you, you're, are you back into the queue?
Yeah, uh, yeah. Just something to maybe follow up on for staff is, uh, something the chair mentioned, that it does seem like it's kind of limited. I'm not against the R3A. I mean, it might sound like I might be, have some problems with it, but, um, I think it could be, uh, applied in more than just these areas. And even though you have, you have this really strict criteria, it has to be the growth-supporting area, plus meet all these other, uh, comp plan areas. And I think it's pretty mu-- if it's, in my opinion, if it's not 70 feet in height, then a 50-foot, um, R3A would apply to a lot more areas. Um, it's just, I have some problems with it applying to 70-foot and across the board, and all the, the, the transitsportive corridors and the, and the Main Streets. But if it's just 50-foot, I think that would apply to a lot more than just these growth-supporting areas. And it could be expanded and probably be implemented a, a lot more aggressively than this would allow.
It's a, it's a great point. Is there a secondary level of criteria for something less than 70 feet that, that you, that you would, that you would think about? And I think that's a great point, because, again, it's, it's not, I don't think it's such a bad thing to have a three-story, uh, mixed-use building in the right location. Um, I had another couple of questions, or points to consider, but Ms. Bailey, you're in the queue.
Um, another issue that I think would be interesting for staff to consider is, while I think it's important that it's along transit-supported development, I think we also have an amazing, um, green belt system established in Anchorage. And so, having something that's along Chester Creek, Campbell Creek Coastal Trail, I think, would be a good incentive to create some of these areas as well, if they meet some of the other conditions. Um, that is one thing I would like to see, is higher-density developments along those corridors, so that they maintain use, and then those trails are safer. so that they maintain use, and then those trails are safer. I think that's something that would be very helpful for the city.
Plus, then you'd really have a reason to go to Turnigan Community Council. So, John made the point, that same point earlier, and I think it's well-taken. I had a couple, a couple of requests. One is, the size of replat, I think, is something that you need to consider. Currently, there's a minimum size, or to rezon. Currently, there's a minimum size to rezon, and can you remind me what that is?
1.75.
1.75. If you are building, I'll just give you an example, of having, just build on a less-than-one-acre lot, on a transit corridor, a three-story building of mixed use, and it's over a $10 million project, it's not an insignificant investment, and it's less than half of the minimum size required to rezon. My point is, is if you're already dictating within the area of a, of a comp plan, what the, where these things ought to go, I think you really need to look at the minimum size that you're allowed to rezon, if we're not rezoning by passing this ordinance automatically, which is the other consideration, right? But if you're depending on the private sector to come through and implement separate rezonings, I think, I think the site that we saw tonight is the outlier, actually, a large site like that. I mean, we've put three-story mixed-use buildings on three standard lots, right? So three 6250 lots, less than 20,000 square feet, and those are the same mixed-use buildings that are held up as examples in all of our planning documents. So I would suggest either that there's no minimum land required to rezon, or that it's very small, maybe, you know, maybe take, take three standard lots and look at it, because I think you can get a pretty good-sized project done there. So I'd like to hear about that. On the sun, I would love to hear your thoughts on both a hard and a discretionary alternative. So I think, Mr. Davis, you were going down the path of saying something where it's, you know, really looking at specific parks and really still having that black and white, you know, look at, look at things, and I think that's great, but I'd also like some, something that had some discretionary review associated with it. And then finally, I just ask you one more time to look at the floor plates, the floor plate assumptions, and also in that, in that option, so again, whether it's 10-foot, is it 10-foot, or is it 12-foot, or more, you know, and again, I can help you reach out, I reached out to one of the architect, architect groups that we work with, but, you know, to look at what the standard is, and then I would ask, is there any, are we getting close at all to either a buy right or less of a big hurdle to look at that fourth floor, whatever that means? Because I think that fourth floor, in the appropriate location, is the cheapest floor that you're going to build, because you will have had, you will have had the foundation, you will have had the elevators, you will have had all the site assemblage, going from three to four is the, is the cheapest floor area that you can actually build. Going beyond that, you get into a different building type. And I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but I would imagine that they were, you guys were on top of a podium of some kind, right, for the, to go up to 70 feet. Nothing wrong with that, but it's also a more expensive building type for us. So those would be the things I'd ask for you to look at. Ms. Bailey, are you back in the queue? You're out. Anybody else with something they would like staff to contemplate? Okay, could we please vote on the motion to postpone to the first meeting in November? And the public hearing is still open, by the way. That motion passes. Thanks, everyone, for your testimony this evening, for putting with us, putting up with us on our technical issues, and I love, I'd kind of, Ms. Bailey, would you mind if I let Mr. Sporey second this motion, so we get Mr. Walker to move? Well, no, Walker, Walker on the approval, seconded by Sporey's motion to adjourn. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.